I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September eighteenth, twenty seventeen, Finance Committee meeting and the minutes of the September eighteen voting meeting.
I shall move.
Move by the second.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
And c.
So we have Director Dugan, Steve, and Director Richardson. Because we were not here. I'll turn to, actually, no, I first report that we had the executive session prior to this meeting. We discussed personnel issues, purchase of real estate, and general informational items. Now I return, or I turn it out to the final four administrative reports.
Thank you. As everybody knows, we are into October, and smartly, we're at the midway point for the first marketing period. And I want to commend the faculty and building administrators for what I think has really been an excellent start for the year. I think everybody's together, giving kids the best opportunity they can. We've done a lot of the diagnostic assessments of the kids, follow benchmarks, identify where they are academically, what they're struggling with in terms of which standards, and how we develop interventions to help those kids move forward, and ultimately master the skill sets they're going to need to be successful graduates. We are really jumping the gun on our budget cycle and getting some things in place sooner. And again, I want to thank Dr. Mendoza, Finance Committee Chair, for getting that started last year as our initial start. And I think that's getting better and keeping us on track and going through it here. But we'll be able to get more information to the public sooner. I want to thank Bill Riley, who's been helping us for the last five months as business manager with the retirement of Mr. Christie. We haven't been advertising for, how do we phrase it, is direct finance and budget. And we should be setting up interviews, really, within the next week or two weeks. So the candidates that we've gotten so far are very dynamic, and I'm hopeful we'll get somebody in here who could fit with the board, who could fit with the district, and be able to help us also move forward in what is surely going to be challenging financial times. I want to congratulate on those, many of you had the opportunity to go see the band festival on Saturday. I think it was probably, in years that I've been here, it might be the best attended band festival that I've seen. One of the nice things about it is bands that are here, ranging from short tier shows through Bethel Park, Bishop Canavan, Cornell, plus R and U's here to do the very last number. It's nice to see the kids cheer for each other regardless of the size of the school. And if you're looking at a school, Bethel Park has two hundred and some kids on the field, and Bishop Canavan, if they had twenty, that would seem like it was a lot. But the kids are very supportive of each other, the audience is very supportive of the kids, and it's just pleasing to see in times when things can be sort of nice, to see people support each other, and fans, and parents congratulate kids from other schools. And that's really nice. And they did a bang-up job, I think Mr. O'Towsky and the band staff, and the kids were really top of their game. So it's been a good start, we're looking to have a good finish, to have a strong first market period. And as everybody knows, a good step leads to another good step. And it won't be long, we'll be talking mid-semester break in January, and with planning for graduation. Probably, I think, for all the years I've been at Carlin, and this is my sixth fall year, this stands out really as one of the better starts. And again, it's been a team effort for everybody from the board here, to the parents, to the faculty, and the administration. So having said that, at this time, I'd like Mr. Riley, though he's not on the agenda, to give a report. We can get some information regarding the index, and we're starting early with some of the budgetary figures and key pieces of data we need to know to build the budget. And of course, the index is one of the primary things we get from the state. Mr. Riley.
Good evening. The sheet, you have two sides on the sheet that I handed out. The one side has the index, and it shows what the confidence is going to be, three point zero percent. This is after they take into consideration the multiple factors, which is over forty percent, eight percent or point four eight percent. This will be divided by being about the same increase than we allowed underneath the index as previous year, which is three point one percent. As I mentioned earlier, if you have a higher mileage number, it comes out to be about the same increase. This does not include the exceptions, which I'm sure that will be qualified on the retirement for a thesis increase, as well as possibly a special education. The flip side of it shows is an update, I put in latest figures that we received in terms of the real estate tax collections. And these collections right here are all at face. And as you can see by the bottom percentages on the bottom of the page, you're at, at Carlingate, you have seventy-nine percent, at Crafton, seventy-two percent, which surprises me. I would expect it to be about equal to the other two, and at Roseland, I'm sure eighty-one percent. Again, there may be another report coming in, but it seems like it's, you know, through the discount period, I think that the taking care of it clearly to get the money accounted for, and then posted to the books and transferred to the school issues, what I'm seeing. I don't know if there's anybody else with any questions on this.
I have a question, kind of a larger question, though. With the proposed amendment to the state constitution with
Excuse me, Laura, could you put your mic down?
Sorry. With the proposed changes to the amendment to the state constitution regarding the homestead exemptions.
Well, you mean in terms of making them a hundred percent, or whatever that is?
How's that potentially impact?
They have to fund it first.
Right, yeah. But do you, just sort of, what are your thoughts on how that could potentially impact our
Oh, it could be very substantial in terms of, I mean, you could figure out a minimum of getting double what you're getting now from the property tax rebate, and the reduction in the assessments of the school district now gets, I don't know the exact number, I think it's in the half a million dollar range. And now you'd be getting a million dollars, which would all go to reducing local taxes and real estate.
So you see that proposed change to the constitution as a potential positive for the district?
Definitely, a big positive for the taxpayers across the state. Like I said, the difficulty is in whether you're going to fund it.
Right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Bill? I'd like to turn to the principal's, I'd like Ms. Burleson.
Okay, I agree, we are off to a fantastic year, with many assessments and things over. We used the last in-service to look at all of the data, then accordingly, make sure all the lessons activities were differentiated, so that was definitely a great day for our staff. We're going to continue in building our partnerships this year, so I think we used the month of September to start and build on our partnerships. I have a PTA, my PTA president here, and we're working on, actually, she's really leading, getting recognized as a school of excellence through the PTA. And pretty much what that means is just a program that supports and celebrates those partnerships with PTA and the school, and enriches the educational experience, and then overall wellbeing for our students. So if you were, if you are a Crafton parent, then you might have received the survey, and that's just the beginning step. It surveys all of our parents and staff, and see if we can go on to the next step in the process. So that's going to be a nice recognition, if we get to move forward with that. We also are working on our partnership. Mr. Hope did a nice job with our sixth grade partnering with Price Waterhouse and Cooper Accounting Firm, and they're just working with this program called Earn, the Earn to Future, and they're working on getting the sixth graders ready with financial literacy, and making sure that they understand kind of how to use their money in the future. And that is, pretty much, works with our three-three-nine guidance counselor program that they've been working together on. So that's Mr. Hope's part, and sixth graders, I walked in and I saw them working on one of those career, and they fill out the quiz, and it kind of tells them what career they're, you know, leaning towards, and they had a great time, they were so engaged, and really enjoyed it. They actually told Mr. Hope Crafton was one of the best schools, or the best school that they worked in. They worked in a lot of schools across Alagany County, so that was nice to hear. And then we'll continue to work with the Crafton and Rotary as we partner with them. They have a career day in the making, and the traveling Civil War trunks are coming to Crafton next week. That was through the Carnegie Free Library. They received the trunks, it's a museum of artifacts, and our students in grades four through six will get to kind of visit the host stations, will get to see what's in it. So we're looking forward to that, that's next week. And you can see that on our calendar, and then pretty much, our rocket launch is coming up, and our red ribbon week, the third week in October. So lots of partnerships and good things coming our way. Thanks.
Is there any other questions for Marsha? Mr. Locke?
You're always the tough act to call out. We are, it isn't We are also developing partnerships and continuing that. We've had a wonderful, successful start to the year with the partnerships, with the Dynamic Learning Project. Seen a lot of changes, been in some classrooms, done some observations where teachers are incorporating, increasing the engagement with the increased use of technology, and the students are having the rack access to increasing the efficiency of their learning, and it's really exciting to be a part of it. Also, as a community, we had our third golf outing this past two weekends ago, which was a wonderful success. And finally, we are preparing for homecoming on the twentieth, and we also have an Internet Safety Awareness Night on October fifteenth. Those are pretty much in the fall places, been working hard as well, and coming to the conclusion of the fall sports season.
Like, is that Internet Safety thing kind of open to the public?
It is open to the public. We'll be publishing that probably tomorrow with the sermon, and we just finalized it today.
Do you look at it here, or?
I guess so. No.
It's a crack.
Crack, sorry.
And the form all page?
All community members, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Okay, touch base on curriculum, Mr. Manish.
Good evening. I'm still not used to this thing.
Either way.
I feel like I'm standing in front of the Supreme Court. Okay. I heard Dr. Piper mention like before long, it's going to be, you know, middle of January, and I'm trying to slow it up and down just to try to get through the next two weeks. Couple of things on our agenda is the PSSA scores, individual scores came in from the IRC. They have been, or it's going to be tomorrow distributed to the elementary schools, there's one copy that's going to go to the permanent record files, and the copy can be mailed home to all the parents. So we should be able to get those within the next week or so. Today was October second, opened up the PIMS window, so we have to get all our state reporting done at that particular point in time. There's thirteen templates need to go up, from child accounting to Title III, homeschool, Act sixteen special ed, graduate dropout counts, all those have to be in by October seventeenth, and God willing, we have the sys system up where we can get all the templates out, get the air taken care of, and get those in by the seventeenth. We received PSSA data on late Thursday, early Friday, that I'm in the process of disaggreging, like I'm going to do with the Keystone Exam, like to break it down by grade level, I like to break it down by all students, historically low performing students, how we fare according to the state averages, and what that translates to us as a number of students that we either made or missed the mark by. So I'm hoping to have those done within a week or so, so we can get those out, because if the next in-service day, on the thirteenth, we're going to look to go over all this data with the faculty. We have completed the classroom diagnostic tools, so we have assessment data sitting there, ready to go. The Keystone data we talked about already, I'll have this PSSA data taken care of. We're going to also look at the P VOS projection data, so we can search out our strengths by anchor standard eligible content, we can look at our weaknesses by anchor standard eligible content, we can look at our current students through their diagnostics and through the P VOS projections that are not yet, so keep my fingers crossed, it'll be here by the thirteenth. So we can start building a list of students who are just kind of sitting on the bubble, we can create a few of targeted interventions, and create resources to help our students that are sitting on that bubble and struggling a little bit, to help us kind of push those couple of students that we talked about last time. When I looked at the data for PSSA, it looks like it's going to be very similar this time, we're talking about two or three students in these categories, and help us push them over the edge into proficiency, to help have every category at or above the state average and state last name. So that's what we're kind of looking at in the next two weeks, it's slow, it's been a little bit, so I keep it caught up.
And we're still a couple of weeks off from the release of the School Performance Profile, is that correct?
That's correct. Now, the thing about that is that I'm not sure about, it's going to be two this year. There's going to be the Pennsylvania School Performance Profile, and there's going to be the Future Rated Index. So one's going to go public on the website, and the other one's going to be used for teacher evaluation. So I haven't seen any data, like they used to do with the Pennsylvania School Performance Profile, they used to kind of give you like previews of data, and let you kind of review the data, and present any questions. All the data I've seen so far, the ones we can't, we can't modify in any way, shape or form, it's pretty much just our demographic data that they gave us. But I haven't seen the third one yet that says, okay, this is where we're seeing your School Performance Profile going to sit, and, but that's not the one that's going to go public anyway, the Future Rated Index is going to go public, and I haven't seen any numbers on that at all.
No, we haven't seen any, it's just
Not, so, you know, we're kind of, we're waiting to see, and, you know, as soon as it comes out, we really just didn't take into that, to see how it compares to the Pennsylvania School Performance Profile, because now we're going to be met on two different
But isn't the intent for next year that the Future Rated PTA profile is going to is going to replace the School Performance Profile?
Supposed to do it now.
Yeah, so, but I think it's supposed to be the only one starting next year, so I think this is probably your, the drywall, like, yeah, this is what it's going to be like, I guess.
But they're still running over the old protocols for the Pennsylvania School Performance Profile.
Right.
So I've seen no data, like, yeah, this is going to go public, they used to give us like indicators, what's going to hit the public site? We've got nothing from the Future Rated Index, but I've got the demographic data, just like they always done for the Pennsylvania School Performance Profile. So again, I haven't seen the final assessment data yet, that's going to go into a PSPP, or anything that they have in relationship to the Future Rated Index.
And they can make probably some sloppy transition rollout that all experience make them going to have to suffer through.
But, yeah, I can see that. And the percentages, the percentages of the way they're scoring one, it's going to be different. You know, what's, you know, they're taking away a little bit, they said, from the assessment data, so the percentage of, percent of proficient and advanced is going to be much lower than it is on the Pennsylvania School Performance Profile. And same thing with the Growth Index, it's going to be lower, but they're going to add a couple more data points in there that they've mentioned to kind of make up the difference. So I'm kind of curious how they're going to compare, but it's been very silent on it, and it's kind of unusual that they've been silent on it for a different reason. So, you know, I'm going to try to, within the next couple of weeks, hopefully.
I, but I just want to remind you that last year, the release of the School Performance Profile, all the super things, had some of the different pans across the Commonwealth, caused the DRC to have numbers, and we didn't get it until November.
Yeah, that's true, too. I forgot about that. Right, yeah. So, you know, we'll just kind of wait to see when they come out, and we'll deal with what you put out there.
Now, is it testing for the PSSA, and is it going to reduce by two days, or please don't, like, game?
No, it's going to be the PSSA.
PSSA, I'm quite shocked.
What they've done is they've taken the PSSA English language charge, it used to be four sections, and we tested it one section a day. So it translates us, it's only going to be three sections, now for ELA, it's only going to be three days instead of four. And its math is going to be, used to be three sections of three days, it's only going to be two sections. So it's going to be two days, and science hasn't changed. So when they went to the public, and they went to newspapers, it said, we're reducing testing by twenty percent. Well, they took two out of nine days, they took two sections out of nine, which was basically twenty-two percent, or twenty percent reduction. So that's how they did it. So that's, I wouldn't
You know math.
Huh?
You know math.
But, but I don't know if that means that the amount of preparation is going to be reduced.
Right, right.
And you're still, because the weights are still the same.
Yep.
Yeah, so just that the amount of kids that are going to be testing, you know, and I'm curious too, because nobody asked this question, I couldn't get an answer to it, is also reducing the test by, by one section, are they going to increase the number of questions inside here at the couple? But nobody's ever answered that question. So, you know, we can't have to wait to see. I, when I was, you know, talking to somebody about ELA, and they said, well, what are they going to get rid of in ELA? And the best guess was writing, because the writing portion of the PSSA was really the one that didn't really align to DA Core. So that was the easiest one for them to remove, and from what I understand, that's what they're going to be doing, removing the writing portion, or the writing part from that particular ELA mission.
Which just shows you how wonky these exams are, because if you're talking twenty-six, twenty-four century skills, really, you can ask any industry, writing is key component.
But then again, you still got this text dependent analysis question, so they're still going to be sitting there as well, and it's kind of, we're, we kind of focused on in the elementary schools and in the middle school, you know, we do need to improve on those, that's one of our targets.
Hey, as we move through the transition with technology, if you have any inforeporting or other reporting that requires system assistance, just give it a couple of extra days, because capabilities are kind of really restricted, so.
I've been trying to grab that bull by the horns myself, and I'm not the most savvy of technology people, but I was able to get in touch with people from PIMS, and get in touch with people from e-schools, and, you know, we've been, we've been trying to work our way through some of the rough spots the best I can. I kind of explained to them that, you tell me what button to push, and I'll push it. As long as we can keep this thing moving forward, we can, we can at least, okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the administrative reports.
Moving on to the miscellaneous section of the meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additions to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen conference field trip request as submitted. How's such a motion? By the second?
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under section two, Personnel, there are five items. I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, deletion of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen activity supplemental list. Number two, addition to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen athletic supplemental list. Number three, legal allowances request of employee number C F T one seven one eight dash zero seven. Number four, addition to the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen day-to-day substitute list as presented. Number five, to employ Sandra Eaton for the position of child accounting registrar for a Class One position consistent with the terms of the Secretary Cafeteria Aids Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. So I have a motion for those five items.
I'm moved.
Moved by the second?
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Section three, Policy, there's one item. I'll entertain a motion to approve the first reading of Policy three zero one through three one three for the P S B A full policy review. I have a motion for that item. Move by the second?
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Old Business, any director of the Old Business they'd like to bring up?
Oh, I just wanted to say congratulations to our students who won, like, people were supposed to play in the Fairchild challenge, I just wanted to buy a pick, and I don't know if any of the principals wanted to touch on that, or just drop it, but I just wanted to say congratulations, because it's kind of very exciting, so, so yay, kids.
Which, which grade was that, I hadn't heard about? Any other Old Business, any director they'd like to bring up?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask for some more information on the student detailed reports that we were hoping to get at mid-October.
Sure, we've been in the process, and this has been going through our help with CCI, and they've been here two days a week entering parent dad in. We got the procedure for reports back, but we weren't able to backload those through the prior reports that came out. So we'd have to move forward with the next report card coming out, but for what we needed from Power School, that's completed. We've been verifying the parent information on Google, so that they'd be able to access that straight through the computer, and we should be good to go for the first market period.
See, did you have a mind to step into that?
That's correct. That's correct. And John Ferrin, who's been with us on Tuesdays and Thursdays entering, that's always been on Thursday to try to get that under wire.
Anybody else with Old Business?
I'd like to bring up one item. I know last, at the last board meeting, we had a presentation from Aaron Mark, and they talked about the policy or the approach for kids who don't have a positive lunch balance, and there was an article in the paper recently about that topic, and I don't recall exactly where our policy was, but I do, I do work
What are, what are practices of that is, is, we've been monitoring students who have a negative balance, but those kids be awarded, not awarded, but those kids be given reimbursable meals. So no child is going to have lunch taken away, or anything else, if the debt is going to try to work out payments for them, to be paid that off. And last year, if you recall, Scott Graff was our cafeteria supervisor, was out, and some of the debts ran up, some of the things have carried over from last year. And I think Ashley Lindhurst is doing a good job, trying to bring those down, but also, our concern is we want the kids to have a meal, so they can get a reimbursable meal. So we're not in a position of, we're going to take something away from the student.
So is the reimbursable meal a different meal than what they've already selected?
Well, they can't go to, like, the Alcoa.
But did they know that before they got in line?
Well, that's, that's a question I'll have to ask Ashley Lindhurst, who knows what, because we are sending letters out to kids, whoa, that. But the idea is that we'd be able to get to the kids, so, you know, nobody wants drama at the cafeteria, nobody wants to embarrass a student, so we're going to do everything we can to try to be proactive with that, so nobody feels singled out or embarrassed, of course.
I advocate for that as well. I know with balance, wanting to make sure that people aren't stealing from the district and from taxpayers, at the same time, we want to be cognizant of the kids. The gist of the article, if anyone read it, was that there are some other districts where because employees feel that they're, they're following a policy, if a student is found to have a lunch at the end of the line, at another district, and they don't have a positive lunch, they remove the lunch from the
No.
And
That's not the thing it was.
Could, so I, if you could review that and make sure that we're
Good, good, so I, um, if you could review that and just make sure that we're.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go with Ashley for having great identifying some of the kids, because we have different names, uh, and it's really not that many.
Great. Any other director of any old business? Not, uh, new business, any director of any new business?
I have a question. Um, I don't know whether it would be a procedure or just something we can put in place so that the board is notified if there are incidents that are within a certain amount of time.
Do you have a, a, a request or recommendation of how much time that would be?
I guess it would depend on, my thought would be, I thought it's twelve hours, that might be too much.
Twelve school hours or twelve?
Twelve.
Hour, hour.
Hours.
Hey, to be clear, you're not talking about.
I'm not talking about, right. I'm talking about, like, if the police are called, if there's a, if there's a, an incident that the community becomes aware of, that we need to be aware of as well. So we would need to set guidelines around that.
Dr. Piper, you can consider that, and, and why if you can maybe work, do you have a?
Sure, we, we can, we get together and talk about how to define incidents, uh, and certainly get something in place at what those are without, at the same time, informing the board while protecting the privacy of students involved.
Sure, we don't need intimate details, but to just be notified.
Sure, we can work something out.
Any other new business questions? Not, well, enough to open forum, any?
Oh, I thought, I thought you said in addition to that, yes, let's talk about the revision of the mission statement. Um, so, uh, I'll start. Um, uh, there was a group of us that met with, um, Glenn Smartshane, and, uh, and this is on part of an ongoing series of discussions that, that the public don't have, of trying to figure out a new mission statement and revision for the district, something that should be done periodically, and it's just, it's sort of passed due for us. And so, uh, we, we met with Glenn, who has a, um, who does this sort of thing, helping schools develop the mission statements, and, uh, he has a plan for working with different stakeholder groups, not just with, uh, the board, but with, uh, community members, teachers, and coming together to revise or revise the statement, which I, is helpful in that if you have a good mission statement, it does help set the direction, uh, that everyone needs to sort of look at as we move forward and make decisions with planning and programming and things like that. Um, our mission statement is, is several years old and a bit rambling, and, and, yes, most people read it, and they kind of get lost when they grew, and midway through, and, um, and doesn't really seem to speak to a lot of people who read it. Coming together, getting input from all these different stakeholders, I think is something that are really good idea. One of the pieces of that is getting the board together and, and trying to find a time that we can work with them. Once he works with us, he then goes separately, without board input, works with the other stakeholder members, and he holds little meetings, and he organizes little meetings, and he comes in, uh, to the board with, with, um, all the teacher input, administration input, the community member input, parents, students. Um, and it, uh, for the years that we've talked about this, this is finally starting to do something about it, so it's very, it's, it's exciting for me, exciting. Because it, it will help us, I think, pinpoint more accurately what our district needs are at this time. And again, like I said, this is pure, something that needs to be done periodically, because things do change, as demographics change, as culture changes, as times change, but right now, I think it, it's a good time to do this. And so, um, I'm not sure what exactly, uh, more needs to be talked about in terms of revising the mission statement other than, is the board at this time willing to start on this process? Is this something that is interesting, but not right now? Is this something that's not interesting at all, um, to the board, I guess, is the question. Because, um, we talk about, we talked about this, just sort of personally, we didn't really talk about planning a meeting with Glenn Smartshane, and what does that mean, and are we willing to do that right now? Because it's going to, going to take, for us, probably Saturday meeting, um, how that looks for the other stakeholders, but probably going to be evening meetings for the other stakeholders, I don't know, he, Glenn Smartshane will take care of that. Um, but I guess moving forward is something that the board is interested in doing at this time, and more at all?
Good question. So, sign in, Ariel.
So I can say personally, I feel like it is an interesting thing, however, I feel like we have some other things that have priority of work at this point for me, um, that we need to devote our time and our meeting time to, and, you know, even if that is a Saturday or an extra session. I feel like we have some other things that we really need to, to kind of hash out and nail down for the ongoing functioning of the district. But I do think it's an interesting and necessary step in the future.
One of the things I, Glenn mentioned in that, in that first meeting was, um, with some of the things that we have going on, having the board's well-defined mission statement can help us get to the place where we want to get to. Like, some of the, um, the process, for, say, you know, the technology directors and that sort of thing. A mission statement can help us sort of narrow our vision, like, oh, we have this idea, but what does that mean? But the mission statement can be oriented in this direction, then maybe this is the kind of guy that we're looking down, down in the general term, um, that.
But if, if I could admit a little bit about it, uh, as you know, we, we've had multiple Saturday sessions where we worked with Tri-State Study Council, we worked with Lou Richardson, we talked about our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. The current mission statement that we have is back to the nineties, and, and at that time, a lot of schools were very flowery, uh, what I call mission statements, but as far as practice goes, it's very difficult to translate that into practice and translate that into something that every member of the organization takes to heart, whether it's teacher, bus driver, custodian, secretary, and so forth. I, I think for a mission statement to be meaningful and to help define where we're going, I, I think there's a value to that, as we're really in, uh, are looking at some difficult financial times and some challenging times from what we hear out of Washington, and we're going to have some challenges facing us in not only being viable financially, but being competitive academically. And I think a mission statement to get together, uh, and start to plan out the key steps that we're about as a calling for the school district for the twenty-first century. I think it's going to help us with budgeting, I think it's going to help us with our strategic planning. We should both have to plan and present to the state. I think it'll be a boon for our faculty, our parents, and our administrative team, because it'll help us discern what some of the priority purchases should be. Right now, everything seems like it's a great idea, you know, and, and I, people on the bet, Marcia Mike, Lauren, Rachel Patuso, we get stuff every day, that this will be the silver bullet that'll bring all kids' scores up to where they need to be at grade level. This will be a long-term plan, this will be a short-term plan. We've sort of danced around the mission statement for the last couple of years and had a preliminary meeting set up with multiple stakeholders in May, and we backed off of that with the decision that we really need help from an outside facilitator to help us as a group move forward with that and really take some time. I would encourage the board that it's very worthwhile, and now is exactly a good time to do it, because we are going to have to make some tough decisions programmatically and academically with the budget, and I think it'll help provide a compass for us. It, I, I wouldn't want to base what we're doing in 2017 on the old mission statement. As nice as that was for its time, I, I just think it's obsolete. Uh, and I think Glenn Smartshane, being a former superintendent himself, not only in Mount Lebanon, but the Allen County School District in Lehigh County, he brings a unique perspective, and he also works with N I S L, the National Institute of School Leadership, uh, and, and I think he's a good person to work with. But I also think if we're going to do it, we really need to have buy-in, uh, from all nine people up here, because without it, then, then we're really just spinning our wheels. Not to mention, we had a preliminary meeting with Glenn, and we had four members, and, and I get everybody's time, uh, is very valuable. Uh, but this, I think, is as valuable as when we met with Diana Kirk and did the SWOT analyses, and, and I think it would help us as we're getting into the budget formation and strategic planning process. So I'd just like to advocate for the value of it, uh, and, and I think it could really be a cornerstone for us for the next many years, with strategic planning and budget creation.
But what would be different than those other meetings, that this would actually be a first step in actually doing something about it, where those other meetings have had some more esoteric discussions, and tried to see where we were, and trying to, you know, same page sort of discussions and things, but no action really came from those meetings. This would be different, because this would be the first step in that smaller plan that would be, um, mediated and monitored and managed by Glenn Smartshane with these other stakeholders, and at the end of everything, this would, we would end up with a mission statement. This, this would be the first step of actually doing something. Whereas I know the board could be frustrated because we've had these, these meetings and they didn't seem to go anywhere. But this one is different, because this was, this was actually, the whole point of this one is getting that mission statement out there, and getting that, that outside person there to do all that, um, planning work and organizational work, and the logistics of getting the, the, tabulating the, um, answers from the different stakeholders and presenting those to us um, at the end of several months, because there's several months of process, um, that he would embark on. And, um, and so, you know, yes, we had discussions with, with Diane Kirk and other people, but the difference is, this one is actually going to resolve, this is, that's the correct work that we did, was necessary, I think, but I can see, as a board, everyone might think, you know, it's a Saturday as well, that it sounds a little frustrating, like, oh, no, that's on a Saturday meeting, that's not going to go anywhere, but this one, the whole point is that it's going to go somewhere.
So with that, do we, there may be some reservations, some legitimate reservations, to you, Gary, and I appreciate you taking, really, on this event. Would you want to present some suggested timelines, uh, some daytime lines the board can consider, and, and you could look at that and see if it fits in with, uh, with everyone's schedule, put it out there, thirty, forty by day?
Well, I, I'd like to know if there's enough interest from the nine, uh, board members here, President Shriver, if we want to proceed with that, because I really, I really can't stress enough, we really have to have mind, have voice, and then we get to the other stakeholders.
Can I ask, is there a cost involved in working with Mr. Smartshane?
Yes, but it, but it's, I, it's not prohibited, but certainly, you know, it just, there was a cost involved working with Diane Kirk. There's a cost involved working with John DeSantis. Uh, there was a cost involved with, working with Lou Richardson. But I thought they all brought things to the table for our operation, our approach as a board with this.
If, if, if the board wants to email Gary separately, or to, and, and indicate your willingness to participate, your interests, your concerns, um, we can sympathize that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and at the same time, you could look at perspective based, this is a, to, if you were interested, then this could potentially be fine, and it could be, I know, and that's not it at all, that might help them form, you know, help. Yeah, I think that, that, that's how, after raising our.
I think it's, it's Saturday's, it's summer, not the fall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other, I guess, new business from the board before I move into open forum?
I have a question for Gary. Can we get clarification on our responsibilities in district, we talk to portal with our students at blessing, uh, the expectations for coaches, uh, class sponsors, whatever the case may be of when that is over, when practice is over, what we expect?
Sure, it is, it is portal to portal as far as our discipline policy covers the students, and, and by that, from the moment a student leaves the front door to the moment they get back, uh, similarly, it's, as an extracurricular activity, our student discipline policy, code of conduct extends to those events. So that if you have a student, let's say, they're at a way, uh, basketball game, and there's a fight in the locker room, two of our players, those players should be disciplined as if the fight took place in the cafeteria, or, or they threw, you know, whatever it is, they got mad and upset, and they vandalized the locker room, so.
That makes sense. Uh, what I'm actually asking about is a coach's responsibility, if a student is picked up. A random director's responsibility, that every kid after the game, that's where the parent has come to get them.
The, the, the general rule of thumb is that our staff should supervise the student, the parents, make them up. It's a duty of care.
Any other new business questions? If not open forum, anyone in the audience have any open forum questions or suggestions or comments for the board?
I just, can I question if, um, I.
Can you, can you state your name for the?
I'm sorry, are you on it?
Sure, please.
Hi, I'm hooking on, um, the president of the P T A, Crafton, and I'm just curious if anything had been, um, moved forward with Y M C A and after-school care? I'd asked Smartshane about it, and like the possibility of having any after-school care at the elementary school? I wasn't sure if any.
Sure, you know, I, I was in discussions with, uh, the Y M C A out of Coriolis, and they came and met with me earlier, you know, I was either late August or early September, and we talked about developing a program. I also talked with Kathy Robinson, Crafton Lieber, about some after-school programs as well.
Think that might happen?
I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic it'll happen, but, but I'm glad you mentioned it to remind me to follow back up with them to see where we are with that.
Would there be a possibility of before-school care or just after? I have a lot of parents asking, so just to be able to get.
The, the discussions that we had so far have been after-school.
Okay. Do you think ever that we do before-school or not?
I, I don't know, it's, it's, we really don't have in our budget this year to do before-school.
Okay.
Uh, but, that's not, it's not something we can't take a look at.
Okay.
You know, and I know we, we work with, you know, some of the districts have head start programs and pre-K programs located in some of the buildings. Uh, I believe we had two pre-K programs in Crafton, uh, we have one in Carnegie, Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
So that, so that could be something we take a look at.
Okay, great, yeah. Do you hear anything else I love, Gary, about that?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is that something that?
Has there ever been any discussion with, like, for example, P Stu Oaks has a program, and it's run by an outside organization, it's not run by the Y M C A, but they do command, they use the buildings, providing before-school care and after-school care, um, facility for district kids and whatnot, and my understanding is the same organization that does P, uh, P Stu does multiple other districts in and around this area. But it's an organized program, they have some sort of agreement with the school to use the building, but they run a before-school program in and after school. I looked into it when my kid was starting kindergarten, we were just making the same concerns. Um, he's now in eighth grade, so it hasn't come here, but, um.
Who finds it? It would be?
I've done it as a parent, I'd say as a parent.
Okay, so.
But it's not a commercial, like, very expensive kind of program.
I think that's the issue a lot of parents have, is they need, like, one day that's affordable, and in Crafton, there's not many places, there's one, that, you know, does after, so if we do affordable, one, there doesn't need to be a minimum. Like, if it could just be one day, that's really what I can think about.
Well, I could, I could call, um, Dr. Shropky over here, and, uh, get some names and contacts.
Great, okay, thank you.
And then for follow-up, Marshall, would you coordinate that, or how would, just to close the loop, are you cutting it?
I, I, we're, we're always, always out.
Can you see that?
Yeah, we, and, and other meetings, so, yeah, we kind of talk about, and I throw some questions out to Dr. Piper right over the answer, so, we're definitely working, yeah.
Thank you for waiting. Any other open forum, might have some of the audience?
Um, just to mention, um, I saw that six cheerleaders were selected from our school district for the All-American team, and that's kind of cool, because they have all this media performance for it.
Fantastic, that's great.
And I'll take a combination, because my daughter is one of those.
Any, any other? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No.
Move by the second. All of it, is that a hearsay?
Huh?
Yep, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, aye?